...per testifier per bill. When I call your name, staff will unmute you and your time will begin. After your minute is completed, staff will mute you so that we can move this hearing along in an orderly and efficient manner. I will also not be reading every testifier who has submitted written testimony. A record of all written testimony submitted can be found online for those who are interested in reviewing all of the written testimony. And with that, we will begin this hearing with our first bill, Senate Bill 47. Today is Monday, February 1st, 2021, 3 o'clock PM. We are in Conference Room 220. Our first bill, Senate Bill 247 relating to public libraries establishes a pilot program to generate revenue through the lease of public library lands to meet the mission of the public libraries, establishes the library facilities fund, requires a state librarian and Board of Education to report to the legislature. Our first testifier is Stacy Aldrich, Executive Director for the State Public Library System. Stacy?
Aloha. Thank you Chair Kidani and members of the committee. The Hawaii, Stacy Aldrich, State Librarian. The Hawaii State Public Library System supports the intent of SB 247 and stands by our written testimony and are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you Stacy. Recession. Calling the committee back to order, for those senators, if you're online, can you mute yourself until you're called, please? So I'm going to open it up for questions right now. Senators, are there any questions on, for Stacy Aldrich on this Senate Bill 247? Senator Kim or Senator Favela, any questions? Stacy, I do have a question. Currently, what is the CIP budget for the libraries?
The request or for this current year?
For this current year.
It was $10 million in the first year and $5 million in the biennium in the supplemental year.
Thank you. So if we are not able to include that requested amount, would you still be able to do this project?
It would be difficult for us to do. I think the challenge for us is not only the funding, but the level of expertise. We will have to work with DAGs, who does our contracting, and we will have to rely on them for their expertise on producing scope of work and moving forward.
So was there any discussion at all with DAGs regarding this bill?
Yes. We review, in the beginning of the budget year, we do review all of our projects and we have to go through the process with DAGs for hiring consultants. And we have 20 projects on top of this project, so we were beginning the discussions of looking for consultants and continuing. The challenge, of course, for us was the pandemic, which changed our budget priorities.
Okay. Thank you Stacy.
Thank you.
No further questions. Moving on to our next testifier, Amy Brinker.
Hi Chair, Amy is not on the Zoom call.
Oh, thank you. She is in support. I don't have any other testifiers signed up for this. Moving on. Senate Bill 144 relating to a school supply subsidy pilot program. This would establish and make an appropriation for a one-year school supply subsidy pilot program at Na'alehu Elementary School. To testify is Dr. Kishimoto, Superintendent, Department of Education.
Hi Chair, she's not on the Zoom call either.
Entry school. To testify is Superintendent, Department of Education.
Hi Chair, she's not on the Zoom call either.
Okay. It seems like we're getting feedback, so you're confusing us. Sign up as Superintendent, Department of Education. Members, you have a written testimony from Dr. Kishimoto, since she was to have been on the call, but apparently is not. Are there any questions, members? Otherwise, we are moving along to item number three. Senate Bill 220 relating to service learning requires the Department of Education to implement a service learning curriculum to develop student character, values, self-esteem, civic responsibility, and knowledge of local community issues and concerns through community service volunteer work. Signed up to testify is Dr. Christina Kishimoto, Superintendent, Department of Education.
Hi Chair, she's not on the Zoom call.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Hello? Hello?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm here to testify on behalf of Dr. Kishimoto.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, this is Terry Ushijima, the interim Assistant Superintendent for the Office of Curriculum and Instructional Design. And the department stands on our written testimony and is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Terry. Members, are there any questions for the department on Senate Bill 220 relating to service learning? Terry, I have a question. I'm not sure. I actually have not read the testimony as I expected to hear it. So is the department in support of this Senate bill?
We're providing comments on this bill. We currently have ACCNs and opportunities for our students to participate in service learning.
Does your ACCN curriculum include what was mentioned in this bill?
It includes, it's elective high school course on community service. So may I ask my specialist if, is Razana Fukuda, who's here with me?
Yes.
This is Razana Fukuda, I'm with the Department of Education, Office of Curriculum and Instructional Design, Social Studies Program.
So my question related to Senate Bill 220, in response to Superintendent's comments that the department has authorized courses and code numbers, ACCN program. My question is, does this program include the service learning curriculum that is within the bill?
Okay, so the, first of all, there are multiple courses throughout the ACCN that incorporate service learning specifically into their curricula. There is also a 2.5 credit course that can be taken twice for graduation elective credit on community service. The community service really provides opportunities for students to develop responsibilities. It encourages partnerships. It encourages humanitarian attitudes. And this is both within, with their peers and with adults and members of the community.
What about curriculum to develop student character, values, self-esteem, civic responsibility?
It does, it allows for all of that, absolutely.
What about financial literacy?
Financial literacy is respectfully, a very different question.
Also at the calendar.
Letting you know.
Online version, but it's like 67 days.
This girl has, does not mention financial literacy, but there is an approved elective course in the Department of Education.
And how many, you said it's a half-credit?
I'm sorry?
The course, the curriculum is a half-credit for elective high school?
Yes, it's 0.5 credit, but it can be repeated. So it can, any student can earn up to one credit, general elective credit for their, in their high school career.
Chair, question.
Senator Kim.
Thank you very much. For, this is elective, an elective course. How many students actually elected it? How many students actually took the course?
I will have to get back with you on that and check those numbers.
Okay, because according to this bill, it would be part of the curriculum and it would be a requirement for graduation. So your current program is elected, so students don't have to take it, correct?
That is correct. It's in line with the school design of Dr. Kishimoto to allow flexibility to, for schools to design curricula that meet their individual needs.
Right, but I think the purpose of the bill is to say that these are life skills that should be learned and should be part of the curriculum and not necessarily be up to each campus. Some students will be financially educated and others won't, and have self-esteem and others may not. So I think that is an important part of their overall curriculum.
And?
I'm not the author of this bill, but I would assume that's what it is.
Literacy is not mentioned in this bill at all.
It's going to be a?
We may have to amend it to include it, Madam Chair.
But I will let you know that the department now has a statewide financial literacy course that schools across the state are, haven't students enrolled in. That's new this year.
And is that elected as well?
It is an elective course.
Okay, and then again, I'd like to know how many, how many students actually sign up for these electives?
So are you asking about financial literacy not in this bill, or are you asking about service learning?
I'm asking about both.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, are there any further questions? Thank you. If not, moving on to item number three, I'm sorry, four. Senate Bill 242 relating to education requires public and charter schools to offer education in computer science, requires annual reports. Scheduled to testify, Dr. Christina Kishimoto, Superintendent, Department of Education.
Hi, this is Terry Ushijima. Again, I'm here to testify on behalf of Dr. Kishimoto for the Hawaii Department of Education. And we stand by our written testimony and we're available for questions.
Madam Chair?
Question.
Point of information, can the department start to at least give us an idea on your testimony? Because being on Zoom, and if public is watching, they don't have, they may not have your testimony. So I think it'd be really helpful if you folks would at least give some general idea why you're, why you're in support or in opposition to a measure going forward. Is that all right, Madam Chair?
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you Senator. Terry, would you like to respond?
Sure. Yes, thank you for the opportunity. So we're providing comments on this and we have continued to work collaboratively on the Computer Science Action Plan that provides deliverables for the 15 complex area computer science support teams. So we've been doing work in this area and we have looked at some of the language. We have a recommendation on page four, I'm sorry, it's not, it's in the testimony, page four, lines 12 to 14. And we're recommending some refinement to the language there on the definition of computer science. And related to the reporting system, currently with our tri-level system of governance, we're able to report the information required in this measure and it does not need to be gathered by the complex areas. We're able to do that at the state office level. So that's some information related to this bill.
Thank you. Members, further questions?
Madam Chair?
Senator Kim.
Thank you. I appreciate you articulating that. The fact that the language you said before lines 12 to 14 is not in your testimony, how would we have known that or gotten that information if you didn't give it to us?
Well, I'm sorry, I thought it was in the testimony on the first page.
Because I thought you just said it's not in your, it's not in the written testimony.
No, no, I'm sorry. What I meant was, I was apologizing since the public doesn't, you know, they can't see what's written.
Oh, okay.
So thank you for asking for that clarification. Yeah, I was just sensitive to that. Thank you.
No, thank you. It's just important that, you know, everybody has a understanding as to why the department supports, not support, or even have comments on how we can make it a better bill. So thank you.
Thank you.
Members, further questions? If not, moving on to the next testifier, David Miyashiro, Executive Director, testifying for Hawaii Kids Can. David?
Aloha, can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Aloha, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, and members of the committee. Wishing good health to you all first and foremost. The legislature and Governor Ege sent a strong message with the passage of Act 51 in 2018. Three years later, Hawaii has made tremendous progress offering computer science at the high school level. And yet, we know that early exposure is critical with closing the ethnic and gender gap in technology. That is why we need SB 242, since it ensures our Kiki and elementary and middle school will build a strong foundation to lead Hawaii into the future. Research shows that these early years are where children build a belief about what is possible in their lives. For a child who has never known someone who has worked in the STEM fields, early exposure will give her the confidence that she can succeed and thrive as an innovator. That's why SB 242's commitment to quality data matters as well. Data is fundamental for equity and transparency. Lastly, the special fund will enable major local and national technologies to put some skin in the game, although it's already?
David, are you complete? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, just, thank you for the opportunity to testify. Just wrapped up.
Thank you. Members, questions? If not, moving on, Katie Hendrickson, Director, Government Affairs, testifying for Code.org.
Aloha, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, members of the committee. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify. I work at Code.org. We're a national nonprofit and we work to ensure that every student has the opportunity to learn computer science in K-12. We've worked with our regional partner, STEMWorks, and local facilitators in the state to provide professional development to over 1,000 elementary teachers, 55 middle school teachers, and over 20 high school teachers for AP computer science principals. We are incredibly excited to see this legislation as it's really going to make a difference for those elementary and middle school students, providing them opportunities to learn computer science. We're also excited to see the fund open up for public-private partnerships. We know that a lot of industry in the state is very eager to contribute and that funding is going to be essential for making sure that each school has the funding and the resources needed to offer this to every student. Mahalo again.
Thank you Katie. Members, are there any questions?
Question?
Senator Kim.
Hi Katie. So Katie, not every student gets offered computer education currently?
That's correct. Every high school is currently teaching it, but only a small percentage of high school students are taking it. And we know that there is research that if students are exposed to computer science and STEM subjects in elementary and middle school, they're going to be more likely to identify with it and opt in to take it when they get to high school.
So as far as our computer, our computer science curriculum at whatever level, there's no, no point, is it part of the general curriculum that exposes the students? Is it always an elective?
I think that would probably depend on the school. In general, it is an elective in the state. There is state curriculum, there's the K-12 computer science standards, but it is up to individual schools to decide which students have access to those opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you Katie. I just wanted to point out to, I found it interesting in your testimony that you mentioned that Hawaii has averaged over 1,400 open computing jobs each month over the past year. And I think that's a tribute to, you know, the importance of technology and with what we are living right now. We know that many of our students are far behind in reading and mathematics. Much of it is because they're having difficulty just working on computers and the skill level that they have. So I do agree that this is a really important bill. So thank you for your testimony Katie. Moving on. Hawaii Society for Technology and Education. Kristin Naomi Rogers Chapman.
Aloha, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, and members of the committee. My name is Kristin Naomi Rogers Chapman, and I most recently was an evaluation specialist in the Accountability Section at Hito. I served for 10 years in Education Hawaii and only left the islands pursuing my doctor in education leadership at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. I began my career in Education Hawaii as a teacher at a middle school. And in my first year, I endured the furloughs that resulted from the 2008 economic crisis. Over the decades, this COVID-19 pandemic has wrought havoc that's not dissimilar to what we endured in 2008. And the need to diversify our state's economy is more clear than ever. To ward this crisis, I believe, which will continue and its effects continue to devastate, it's important to ensure our students are equipped with the skills to thrive in high-wage, high-growth industries here in the state. Now, I think we've made great progress with Act 41, and I think that SB 242 builds on that progress to promote and accelerate equity and access to computer science courses by providing better student data. For these reasons, please consider supporting this bill. Makapun.
Thank you Kristin. Members, questions? If not, we will move on to item number five. Senate Bill 463 relating to gardens authorizes the Department of Education to develop programs to encourage the development of gardens on school property. Authorizes the Hawaii Community Development Authority to develop programs that provide incentives to establish gardens in housing projects, communities, and schools. To testify, Dr. Christina Kishimoto, Superintendent, Department of Education.
Aloha, this is Terry Ushijima, testifying on behalf of Dr. Kishimoto. The Department of Education provides comments on SB 463. And the department agrees that students should engage in a well-rounded curriculum with topics including nutrition and obesity prevention, composting and waste management techniques, and cultural and historical aspects of the local food supply. The department is deeply committed to wellness as demonstrated in the Hawaii Board of Education Policy, Health and Wellness, and to AINA-based education. The department has subject matter standards that include related concepts and content areas, including health, science, and social studies. Existing policies, 105-1 academic programs, 105-2 responsibility for curriculum development implementation, and curriculum online for the goals in making curricular instructional design sessions to provide a quality, standards-based academic program that aligns and fits the needs of their school communities.
Thank you. I don't have any others signed up to testify. Members, questions of the department? If not, Senator Kim?
Thank you Terry. So I know you said you're providing comments, but is it, yes, we would implement these measures if it passes, or based on your testimony?
Yes, we would respectfully want to have more information on what it would involve
on what it would involve with the Hawaii Community Development Authority and the human resources of the University of Hawaii at Manoa. Um, we think that there may be implications for our schools that could arise from these conversations. So at this point, we are, um, providing comments.
Great, thank you.
I wanted to point out, uh, this is not a bill that says they, they have to. It says they may, so. Uh, members, if no further questions, we will recess for decision-making. Reconvening the Committee on Education. The committee has met and deliberated and the recommendation for Senate Bill 247 relating to public libraries is to pass with amendments, taking the library's suggested amendments to replace Board of Education with Department of Education in Section 1. Members, questions? If not, Chair votes aye.
Recommendation for SB 247 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator De La Cruz?
Aye.
I vote aye. Senator Favella?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, you have five ayes. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 144 relating to a school supply subsidy pilot program at Na'alehu Elementary School. The recommendation of the chair is to pass with amendments, blanking out the appropriation and noting the amount in the committee report for WHAM to consider. No questions? Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye for SB 144 to pass with amendments. Chair Kidani votes aye. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator De La Cruz?
Aye.
I vote aye. Senator Favella?
Aye.
Chair, five ayes. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 220 relating to service learning require the department to implement a service learning curriculum to do, to develop student character, values, self-esteem, civic responsibility, and knowledge of local community issues and concerns through community service volunteer work. The recommendation of the chair is to amend to include financial literacy. Questions? If not, Senate Bill 220 to amend to include financial literacy. Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendation for Senate Bill 220 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator De La Cruz?
Aye.
I vote aye. Senator Favella?
Aye.
Chair, five ayes. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 242 relating to education requires public and charter schools to offer education in computer science. Requires annual reports. Recommendation of the chair is to pass with amendments, taking the Department of Education's proposed amendments to align the definition of computer science on page four, lines 12 through 14, with the National Definition of Computer Science by Alan Tucker. Also clarifying that the annual report will be submitted by the DOE but broken down by complex area. With no questions, recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 242 with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Recommendation for SB 242 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator De La Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
I vote aye. Chair, five ayes. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. For our final bill, Senate Bill 463 relating to gardens authorizes the Department of Education to develop programs to encourage development of gardens on school property. Authorizes Hawaii Community Development Authority to develop programs that provide incentives to establish gardens in housing projects, communities, and schools. Recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 463 with amendments and the amendments would be to put a priority in for edible and native Hawaiian plants in the school gardens. Members, questions? If not, Senate Bill 463 with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendation for SB 463 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator De La Cruz?
Aye.
I vote aye. Senator Favella?
Aye.
Five ayes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
That concludes the hearing of the Education Committee adjourned.